Monday night, Town Board Director Meeting. And so glad to see every chair almost is full tonight, so that means we're honoring someone. And I know it's not me. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for our opening invitation from Chaplain Larry Jenkins and remain standing for the place of allegiance.
The first council meeting that I came to some time ago, there was a pastor that stood here. He said he was reminded of King Solomon. And King Solomon didn't know how to lead his people. So he inquired of God and he said, "Show me how to govern your people." Not only did God bless him with the wisdom to govern the people, but he made him the richest king in history. So my prayer is for guidance for the town of Hope Mills with this commission and our new mayor. Father, we thank you for this day, oh Lord. We thank you for these council members. We thank you for this mayor, oh God. We ask you to bless them indeed, oh God. Cover them as they travel back and forth to home and to work. Keep their homes safe. Keep their families safe, oh God. Dispatch your angels to watch over the town of Hope Mills, oh God. We ask nothing but the blessings for this town, oh God. And the development of this town. The council members, the mayor, all the way to the city board people and those who worked in the offices of the town, oh God. Bless the workers of Hope Mills, the police officers, oh God, the chief. Cover them with your blood, oh God. And anoint them to do service for the people, oh God. We thank you, God. We thank you for this assembly. We thank you for what you're getting ready to do here this evening, God. And we give you name, the glory, the honor, and the praise. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda, additions or deletions. Uh, we will be removing item... Under number four, presentations, we will be removing item B. Police officer is not with us tonight, so we're gonna remove that item. You have a motion that we remove just that item from the agenda and approve the agenda as prepared.
Mayor, I make motion to approve the agenda with the correction to move item B from presentations.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I like the motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11, eight six for the sub personnel matters.
Second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, okay, we'll be back momentarily, we'll be in closed session. Got it. The manager McLaughlin has accepted the contract. I will ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Also, I have a prepared statement that I wanna read. One year ago, February sixth, Mr. McLaughlin was, he served as the Development Services Director for the town. And he was appointed to serve as interim town manager. When our former town manager Scott Mazuris resigned, at that time, Mr. McLaughlin served as planning director, economic development director, development services director overseeing code enforcement. And he'd been in this role for nine years with our town. During the past year, he's continued to serve the town in all three of those positions and as interim town manager, thus four positions he has served in the past year. Now, he inherited a significant number of internal issues related to employee morale, complaints, lawsuits. And he immediately addressed those by making mandatory diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI training for all town employees, including elected officials. And he assisted the police department to do more community police oriented. He also presented in May a new town operation budget that is in place for this year. He continued oversight of the public safety building until it was completed. Along with Heritage Park Phase One, which is a thirteen-year project, and an inclusive playground complex Phase Two, which is a ten-year project. These are all accomplishments in his year. Going forward, he is really gonna get after the budget priorities for us, a comprehensive strategic plan, subdivision ordinance, pay study. These are some of the goals that he's working on now. I realize that some citizens want the town manager position advertised prior to the Town Board tonight making a final decision. I say this because I want, I want folks to hear it from me. But I will tell you that Mr. McLaughlin has worked in the town manager position for one year. Four positions. Inherited a number of projects which I have just described. And his recent performance evaluation was rated above average, which means he exceeds the performance standard. Now, doesn't that speak volume? If there's nothing else that would compel someone, that speaks volume about his passion and dedication for the position he's in. And I don't know what benefit it would be to advertise for a position, spend taxpayer dollars, when we have the right person at the right time for the right position. Further, and I'll close it with this. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray and I, we are fortunate that we work for an outstanding community college, available technical community college where internal talents and skill sets are valued. To promote to higher leadership positions within the college, both of us have been promoted to leadership positions at this college. Over the past year, Mr. McLaughlin has clearly demonstrated his passion toward the betterment of the Hope Mills community by effectively serving as interim town manager. He has our confidence as the board. And with that, I will ask that we start the swearing in ceremony to make this thing official tonight. I might even want to note something. Traditionally, the swearing in is a role of the mayor. Tonight, that role is not the role of the mayor. That is the role of the county's father, who the mayor served with for many years on the rural act committee. And his dedicated service to the community on the Board of Waco. So I defer that tonight to a very senior man that's most deserving to swear in. His son is the next town manager of Hope Mills.
On behalf of Cumberland County Alumni Chapter, I'm proud to announce that our queen twenty-three, twenty-four is Ms. Madison Helene McLaughlin. Uh, she represents our chapter. We have, uh, we had six young ladies that was running. She won position as queen of Little Bliss at the shoe. And, um, we also have another ancient group that was tied between us to private income. But I thought it was Philly that served her day with Miss Warren and her, that she should be recognized by the lack of her religious heritage.
Alright. Alright, folks, next, next on our agenda tonight is a proclamation recognizing Black History Month. I'm gonna read a proclamation. And when I'm finished, there's a little bit of history that I kinda wanted to share with the town that came up a couple of years ago, the video about an individual. And I think we can get that video to run while everyone is still here. From Samuel Jasper Hodges. It's a really, really good video. It's short, but it's an historical piece of the video. And I'd like to play that for everyone that's here tonight.
Mr. Ma... And I know this will be mentioned later on, but, um, Mr. McLaughlin is making history tonight. He's the first African-American town manager in the town of Hope Mills.
The United States Institute has been struck in the fifty-one town Robert Brown in the pine, which is now called Cleveland. So great when we use that in place of the family group from that home in the central city street. And then we post that in the central property, which is located off of the road. As we've passed, the children of Mary, your native Aaron's community town, which is a great, has been a pioneer of the present, from the over the west. In nineteen forty-five, the governor named the health of June, honored that husband and children, who were rich and story of top weight of the state. The husband and children have been through the pain of their relief, both of them fell into the river. The descendants of Samuel Hodges credit for many cities and states and have been notable accomplishments. Celebrates food and first black, formerly from the out of the central hall of the main event. Owner of a different practice in the city of Fayetteville. The fervent secretary of export craft, a Broneman's in North Carolina. Chairman who is North Carolina as a social extension director. Female in theology and in the digital problem. Executive for a national television network, NBC. A member of the first graduating class in our school's history of college and religion. Female commander of tenth of the early in college. One of the youngest teens for the directly appointed. Detective for the local community sheriff's department. Proclamation over partisan views, now in train access during the Vietnam War. The hotel's historic preservation committee wishes to recognize this notable family of Samuel J. and many of the others. And to remember the positive contributions of the husband's anger to our future.
This YouTube presentation, along with a proclamation, of which it's done. This YouTube video, along with the proclamation, was put together last year by the Hope Mills Historic Reservation Committee and Town Historian Pat Hall, who researched and crafted the resolution tribute to honor the Hodges family after so many years and generations. The amazing family and the descendants of this family have contributed so much to the history of Hope Mills, which has a rich history. And since I am reading a proclamation tonight for Black History Month in the town of Hope Mills, I wanted to share this proclamation two years ago, along with that video, as part of a tribute to a long generational family that has really served our community so much. And like Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray just note, just made a note, that Chancellor is now the first to serve in the town manager position. And we can add him to that long list of great events and generations over the years as well. Proclamation proclaiming February twenty-twenty-four, Black History Month in the town of Hope Mills. Whereas, Black History Month is observed every February throughout the United States to celebrate and recognize the role and contributions of Black and African-Americans in our history and culture. Black History Month was created as an opportunity to celebrate achievements by Black Americans. And a time for recognizing their central role in the United States' history. Each February, we take stock of the cumulative efforts undertaken by Black people individually and collectively. And whereas many leaders and visionaries have led the movement to celebrate the Black experience and advocate for freedom, justice, love, and overall well-being. Well-being, and whereas the town of Hope Mills acknowledges and rejects the long history of institutional and structural racism toward African-Americans in the United States, and calls attention to the continued need to comfort, confront, sorry, confront racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic values. We endeavor to dismantle the systematic barrier set up to hinder Black people's ability to achieve quality opportunity, social mobility, and to focus on systemic change that prioritizes dignity and the power of Black people. And whereas, the town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners honors the rich heritage, extraordinary legacies, and ongoing accomplishments of Black and American and African-Americans, and joins the force of other local, state, and national leaders to celebrate, celebrate Black and African-American excellence. We celebrate and recognize Black and African-American communities not only this month, but three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Now, therefore, I Jesse Valflowers, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills and the Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim February twenty-twenty-four as Black History Month in the town of Hope Mills on this fifth day of February twenty-twenty-four. Anybody sign for public comments? Okay. Moving on, consent agenda is next. Two items on the consent agenda, consideration to approve of approval of the Board of Commissioners January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four reserved meeting minutes. And consideration of approval of closed session minutes. Second? All in favor? Okay, no one opposed, motion carries. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight as you're leaving. Thank you very much. I was gonna try to catch you, but went out. That's the end of the consent agenda. Old business, there are none, new business, approving engagement letter from Parker Poe on behalf of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And I will ask our town manager, Chancellor McLaughlin, to speak on this item.
Um, this is an actual, another aspect of the agreement that we did with the League of Municipalities. Um, embedded with that agreement is also a ten thousand dollar, um, billable hours amount to get legal services to govern the disbursement of the offer from them. And so what happens is, not only do we have the thirty thousand in billable hours to pursue grants, there's a legal aspect that I cleared with our town attorney, uh, that basically helps that whatever grants we get, this aspect of it will help, um, them administer the legal aspects of it. That's just another little piece of this, uh, agreement that we did. And so that brings the billable hours up to the forty thousand, with this specific proportion assigned to the legal aspect.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, item A.
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Item B is consideration of resolution R twenty-two-four dash oh-three, set of public hearing with annexation number A twenty-two-four zero-one. This was on you again, Chancellor.
Um, this is the continuation, um, setting the public hearing. This is tied to the development, um, that ties into the Valley Inn subdivision. And again, I wanna reiterate, this is the project that we brought that, uh, handles the Applegate issue. Um, this is the section of the annexation agreement where we're setting the public hearing for full, uh, approval. What you'll get at the next, uh, hearing, um, is when you will get the presentation from planning. You'll get the memo from plan review that'll show you that all the recommendations from the different departments are, um, in compliance. And then you'll get a request to start the administrative process. So this is just the next step in the annexation.
Do we have a motion?
No, make a motion if we are, Doc, resolution R dash twenty-two-four dash oh-three, to set a public hearing for annexation number A two, two zero two-four dash oh-one.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is item C, approving budget amendment number seventeen in the amount of one thousand twenty-five dollars from the federal asset forfeiture funds for lease spending. That was on you too, Chancellor.
Um, I'd like to call Finance Director Ju Holland or Police Chief, um, Stephen Dowd to the speaker.
Greetings, Chief.
Good afternoon. Good evening, how are you? Wanted to congratulate Mr. McLaughlin and, uh, thank him for all the support he's given the police department over the last year. Really made some great inroads and helped us with all of our programs tonight. My office, and I appreciate that greatly, thank you. Um, this is just, uh, this comes from asset forfeiture, which receives the proceeds of criminal, criminal, um, proceeds of criminal activity. This is our share, uh, drug money, uh, receives, uh, money from drug dealers or stuff like that. We have, uh, restrictions on what we can and can't use it for. It can be regular, regular budgetary items. It's gotta be, uh, training or, or stuff like that. This is, uh, for challenge coins, which we're gonna use for our community outreach program that we can give to, uh, citizens and stuff when they come into tour the building and stuff like that.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Thank you very much, Chief. That's a, that's a really good way to spend this money on those coins. Motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve budget amendment number seventeen for the amount of one thousand twenty-five dollars.
Second? Motion second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Last item under new business is item D, consideration of accepting the proposal from Caroline Parks and Play ABA landscape structures for the purchase installation of a picnic shelter at the Reed's Journey Inclusive Playground Complex for an amount not exceeding seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars fourteen cents, and authorize the town manager to execute purchase using Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number zero-one zero-five-two-one-l-s-i. Uh, right here. There he is.
Good evening. So, um, picnic shelter is just a portion of what was approved by the board from the last board meeting in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Um, the shelter actually came in three thousand dollars less than my budgetary amount. We had budget seventy-five thousand dollars, quote, came in, it's a little over seven two thousand dollars.
Lamarcus, what, what size is this shelter? Is it the same size of shelters that we have currently in the park?
It's slightly larger than shelter number two. It's a twenty-six foot by twenty-six foot, um, standard metal seam, um, metal structure. So, uh, slightly different, um, it may be a little bit larger than shelter number two.
Okay.
But, um, much more sturdier and going forward, this is gonna be the standard for our shelters. They tend to last longer, um, with a whole lot less maintenance associated with roof. So, um, this would be the standard, so we're gonna do something similar at the golf course. It's gonna be standard for...
That's where else going?
Yep.
Yeah, this would really work out well down at, uh, Golf Field Greenway. Is the, do we have the, uh, is the picnic table package with this, or is this a standalone?
Uh, it's a standalone, but, um, I have Maxie Dove working on ordering the tables. So the tables are all ordered. So the tables are ordered also, so those will be coming up next. We tend, when we find a event that we like, we see if they're on the government contract, and if they're on the cooperative government contract, we get thirty percent off. So we're always looking for ways to save. And every little bit I save as far as we budgeted, we can use that towards some of the other elements in the park. Same with liquor swing. We budgeted twenty thousand dollars for liquor swing, but we got close yesterday for seventeen thousand, so that's a lot saved using, using government contract and dealing directly with the manufacturer in lieu of going through another, another distributor.
And you know, Lamarcos, this is the very reason why this board moved that two hundred thousand dollars to go ahead and complete this space, was to save the amount of money that you're sharing with us tonight by using the appropriate contractors that you're using. So this is really a win when deals, it's already coming in under the budget that you rejected. Have a motion?
No, I'm not gonna make a motion if we authorize the town manager to negotiate an agreement to a contract with Carolina Parks and Play D B A landscape structures using the source wealth cooperative purchasing contract number zero one zero five two one dash L S I for the purchase and installation of the picnic shelter at Reed's Journey inclusive play complex.
Second? All those in favor? Ah, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, let me ask for discussion, sorry, good point. Go ahead.
Okay, I see in here where it says that this amount is not to exceed seventy-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-two fourteen. However, in their contract, it says that we've got to give them a location to store their equipment, and we're responsible for theft or damage of the equipment. And if additional site work or equipment is needed, then the price itself is changed. So are they gonna do it for this, or they gonna keep coming back just like, and asking for more money in the fall moon?
So typical with any purchase cooperative, we made provisions, so we actually have a secure site for them to store their materials. We have it situated where once the material is delivered, there's not gonna be a whole lot of laydown time, maybe a few days or so. So once the equipment arrives, the contractor's gonna be on site to install it. I mean, I'm thinking no more than seven days. So just like with anything, for example, the restroom for Heritage Park, same language, and that material has been stored in a secure location at the golf course, waiting for the site work for Heritage Park. And so we got, we have, we have all of the equipment in a secure location. So I feel confident that it's secure, that it won't be defected or anything like that.
But what about if they come back and say, you know, we found rocks and stuff, and roots and stuff, and how am I gonna have to pay fifty thousand dollars to have these dealt with?
We won't have to worry about that because we, we actually, we actually, the location that we have for the shelter is a grass area that we graded out prior to. So right now, it's open space at the Reed's Journey play complex. So we're certain, having run utilities, run water lines, and storm drainage, there's nothing, there's nothing below ground that we identified during that work that would have them come back and say they want more money. It's actually been graded, we graded that area out to be flat, so that all we gotta do is come back and pour the concrete pad. So I'm confident that we're not gonna have those issues either.
So we can look at not one over if this said that three thousand is dead, or if it's two thousand, fourteen thousand.
They have to have a very, very good reason. And I'm, I'm not Mr. Change Order guy, you know, I did, I, I did project management twenty-three years, and a lot of those guys hate to see me coming because it's gonna be really hard for me to prove a change order. So there's no, there's nothing there that would justify change order, in my opinion.
Okay? Good? All right, now, all in favor? All in favor? If you don't wanna oppose, motion carries. Go into the committee liaisons update, and we'll start off with Commissioner Brian Martin.
I'm gonna report a second, Mayor, let me pull up an email that Ms. Reeves sent me so I can read it.
Good evening.
Mayor, I can read my file.
Okay, go ahead.
So I have quite a few committees, so, all right, starting with Veterans Affairs Committee, we did not have a forum, so no meeting, not much to go on for that. We're looking, we had two people that were guests that came to the meeting. I don't know if they submitted any applications, but we gave them the information to submit applications for, to join the committee, so that's where we're at currently. That's for Veterans Affairs Committee, for the Cumberland County Air Quality Ambassador's Committee. So they work in part with Sustainable Sand Hills, and they also do a little bit, they work with FAMFO. A couple weeks ago, there was an actual code red air quality, and that is like the worst kind of air. It was, it was actually very, for those of us who are sensitive, I get bad sinus migraines, there was, there was a fire in the vicinity, not exactly sure where, I think it was Fort Liberty, but that was bad enough that affected all the areas surrounding, so there was an actual code red air quality alert for that. I get those email alerts, and I try to push them out on Facebook when I get them. Unfortunately, we only had that one for as ever, long time. Also, there's from air quality that has to do with Sustainable Sand Hills, there was in conjunction with FAMFO, there's a survey that I have a link to, where FAMFO wants to input, so which transportation projects in the Sand Hills areas would you like to prioritize? And I have the link for that, QR code, so I can get that to have it put up on the town website as well, have that information. Also with air quality, Earth Day twenty twenty-four is gonna be on April twentieth, and there's gonna be a Earth Day celebration with Sustainable Sand Hills, April twentieth at eight AM to three PM. It's gonna be at Festival Park. They're going to have five K and ten K races, there's gonna be a cornhole tournament, games. I know there's supposed to be a, what is it, EV vehicles, the electric vehicles, there's supposed to be a car show for those, and they'll have that. There's gonna be vendors, food and beverages, environmental education, stuff like that. So that will be April twentieth at the Festival Park. So that was it for air quality. From FAMFO, I just came on the board with FAMFO, so it's a, it's a learning curve, it's a lot of information. I just had my first meeting with them. I had an orientation with the director yesterday. So there's a lot of stuff I'm working on learning, and as soon as I get more, more into the verbiage and how everything works, I'll be able to read the hell a little bit better. That was for FAMFO. Then there, I also am with the Hope Mills Area Chamber of Commerce. I am their, I'm the liaison, I'm also one of their board members. There's quite a few events that the chamber is looking to put on. I know Chancellor could even speak about it, because we've been working together with a lot of these projects. We have an arts splash coming up, that was, I'm gonna chime in with Dr. McCray for her part for that too. Arts splash coming up, we also have the community event. There's a lot of other, I have to find my notes. The chamber, we also hold monthly coffee meets, we met at Cumberland Coffee Roasters, it's a coffee club, we do that once a month, we just had it February first. The chamber has its own calendar. If you go on the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce website, they have that information, also their Facebook page, there's a lot of stuff for that. I think I pretty much hit on everything a little bit, so.
Pretty good, thank you very much.
Mayor, the Historic Preservation Committee, they met on January tenth, and put together plans for Charter Day on March ninth, at the Thomas Campbell Oakley Memorial Chapel. There will be a brief ceremony with the Artist Village Choir singing the National Anthem and a selection of songs from the late eighteen hundreds. Ms. Reeves will be presenting a synopsis of the history of the charters in England and France to the creation of our own town charter in eighteen ninety-one. Mr. Belfires will give a speech on the progress of our town and the contribution of our governmental body from eighteen ninety-one to present. Town Hope Mills pins and original town charter scrolls will be given to attendees for this occasion, and light refreshness will be served afterwards. And their next meeting is scheduled for the fourteenth of this month. Also, roulette hasn't met yet since I've been a corner deck meeting, I believe, there's a meeting this month for five.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Marley. Commissioner Frager.
I'm the liaison for Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I actually received an email stating that that meeting was gonna be canceled, so I didn't go to it, and so I went on to my dental appointment. But then I received the minutes today from the Parks and Recreation Director, and I'd like to go over some of the things that they did at the meeting on January the twenty-ninth. They could not review the meeting minutes because they didn't have enough members present for quorum, reviewed the agenda, they did not have enough members present for the quorum. Old business, they talked about the, what's been taking place on Heritage Park. I think it says that KC Contractors was awarded the contract within that not to exceed one million two hundred and seventy-seven thousand forty dollars, and four hundred thousand in Arthur Funds was appropriated for the sports complex, complex project to complete the Heritage Park project and provide a ten percent contingency. The veteran memorial improvements, bids came in over approved budget. With informal bidding, the town can, I can advertise for bids until they receive a bid within the budget or redid the project, waiting on diamond asphalt paint. Hope Mills Rockfish baseball team, the town is working with the owners to finalize the concession stand portion of the, excuse me, of the contract. It needs to be modified to allow them to sell beer and wine. We are taking the old fence now, but we'll be keeping it if we need it in the future. They want to take over the smart stair, they want to take over the concession stand year round. They would pour additional sidewalks around the shelter. There would also be an additional window to serve out of. In the new business, they talked about what the board has approved to complete the Reed's Journey inclusive play complex. They went over the new senior citizens development. They're gonna have a Juneteenth kickoff at Dirtbag Els. The town has decided to partner with Dirtbag Els to bring back the kickoff celebration of Juneteenth. There will be a, okay, read this, there will be a live band, spoken word, food trucks, and vendors. That event will be on the fifteenth of June and begin at eleven AM. A special event is the Hope Mills Cotton Tail Trail, and they're looking for vendors and volunteers to set up booths during the event to hand out candy, Easter eggs, et cetera. Thirteen vendors have confirmed. There is an application process. If interested, please email, email mmeirniss@townofhope mills dot com. Sunshine service, or excuse me, sunrise services to be determined. Opening day for spring sports is April eight, thirteen. Litter sweep, April the twentieth. Spring yard sale is April the twenty-seventh. Trucks and stuff, Saturday, May fourth, ten AM to one PM. Memorial Day Ceremony, Monday, May the twenty-seventh. Juneteenth kickoff, June the fifteenth. Independence Day Celebration, Saturday, June twenty-ninth, from five to nine. Independence Day Parade, Thursday, July the fourth, time to be determined. And they went on, spring sports sign up are going on now till February the twenty-ninth. This includes wrestling, baseball, softball, and indoor soccer. Halfway through basketball season, and everything has gone well so far. Splash pad, manhole boxes will be dropped off this week. They should start digging in the next week or so, hoping to have this finished before the start of the spring sports season. Meeting adjourned at eight PM.
All right.
And on my other committee, which is the Economic Development Committee, we have not met yet, so I have nothing to report.
Okay, Commissioner Gerald E. with the mayor.
I do not pretend to.
Last, Mayor pretends, Dr. McCray.
I'll start with the, we haven't met as Commissioner McCray presented, with the Economic Development Committee, the prime owners, I am still looking for young people between the ages of eighteen and thirty-nine to join that committee. They did donate, they did adopt two families from Rockfish Elementary for Christmas, and they did donate gift to that family. That was the last thing they did before we kind of became not active anymore. The Cultural Arts Committee, although we don't have enough people to formally have a forum, to have a committee, we, as Commissioner McCray stated, we will have our first annual Juneteenth celebration with the Town of Hope Mills, circa eighteen sixty-five, and Dirtbag Els, June fifteenth. June will be a very, very busy month for us. On June eighth, we are partnering with the Hope Mills Data to host a gun violence awareness walk. It's gonna be an event, it does have an artistic component, we plan to have some spoken word and some other activities around that day. On June seventh, there's National Gun Violence Awareness Day, so we're actually doing it on June eighth. We'll also have the Little Shop of Girl Scout Troop, eighteen or fourteen, here, I think they came in November or October, they did a PSA, they did their, their silver award, I believe it was, about gun violence prevention. They'll participate, and so will some other members of the design, and I think we're gonna try to work with the police chief to bring them in as well. And I am, and so there's another Artist Village in collaboration with the Hope Mills Chamber, we see the grant from Arts Council.
We're still working, so, we're still working on the grant, because there's more information. I just got an email today that there's more information that we have to submit, but we're trying to have an art, we're gonna call it arts splash. It's gonna be in collaboration with the town, Chamber of Commerce, and the Artist Village. So we're all working together, trying to do essentially an art day at the lake. That's what the big plan is. We're still working on the grant to see if we can get the funding for it, because we have to, all the money has to come from this grant. So once we get, if we get the grant, all that money's gotta be used towards it. Some of the things that we're working on, like, I, I was gonna actually hold a class for building birdhouses, and so I have the license plates, old license plates, I got And so, um, I have the license plates, old license plates I got through the Star Preservation Committee. Gonna use those as roofs. So it's gonna turn those into, um, birdhouses. I did one as a test run. Um, but we're looking at all different kinds of art event, um, art events going on. But the grant is still in process. So we don't know how it's gonna go, but it's a work in progress. But that's what we're. The, uh, June first is the date that I put more to follow. And that's all that I have. Just gonna.
Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray. Lastly, it's, it's mine with the Mayor's Coalition, which met at Spring Lake on Friday, February second. Uh, there was a briefing from Fort Liberty from Garrison Commander Colonel Wilcox. There was also a briefing from Devon Heath, who's the new president and CEO of Distinctly Fayetteville. Economic Development Update and some roundtable discussion and comments among all nine municipalities. Myself was there along with Town Manager Chancellor McGlocklin, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray. And we listened to a very, very good update from Colonel Wilcox about the footprint of Fort Liberty Reservation and the ongoing discussions about the, uh, new school proposal, uh, that's in progress now of discussion consideration. It's gonna be on the old, uh, Striker Golf Course. One of the big keys that came out of Distinctly Fayetteville is the rebranding of the city along with Cumberland County and the municipalities. Uh, North Carolina currently is the number ninth, uh, in the nation for, uh, population and projected to grow number seven in the coming years. There's a lot of, uh, businesses that are looking at relocating to North Carolina. Two of the primary economic drivers are, one is healthcare and the second one is manufacturing. So those were some of the big things that came out. But that rebranding piece was pretty, pretty key to listen to. And yes, we did propose to Glenn Adams, Chair of Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, that we would like to have a serious discussion about a regional bus transportation program with partnership with the City of Fayetteville fast. And Mayor Pro Tem Kathy, uh, Jensen was there representing the City of Fayetteville. And we'll be engaged in some of those discussions probably tomorrow and later in, later on during the month as possibly through grant opportunities, we may be able to do this. For the first time, I can probably say it looks, it does look attainable. It would, it really, really does. But it's gonna be some discussions. So that's my report from Mayor's Coalition. Next report, we'll finish up tonight with our Town Managers Report from Town Manager Chancellor McGlock. It sounds good. It sounds good to say.
One thing I forgot to add, Sheets, Sheets is opening soon. I'm sorry. Uh, it's gonna be coming probably from, rumor has it, and then I'll go like a week and a half or so, but hopefully soon. Sheet's open.
Please, don't give it a secret.
More, more, I, I don't wanna, you know, I, I, I don't wanna be premature, but it's coming soon. Trust me, you'll know.
Oh, no. Thank you, Commissioner Osborn, Mayor. Um, Independence Day is open for food truck with, uh, registration. Um, celebration will be on June twenty-ninth from five PM to nine PM. The cost is zero for the food trucks in lieu of them, um, providing seven tickets apiece for complimentary meals for volunteers and police officers and firefighters. Um, the Hope Mills Senior Expo is still moving forward, March eighth. That is a partnership with the Mid-Carolina Council on Aging. It's a very powerful event where senior citizens will be providing, um, breakout sessions on how to navigate Medicaid, vendors, and buy, uh, vital, vital resources to senior citizens. The, um, next round of Hope Mills Police, um, Walk with the Cop is moving forward on February twentieth, twenty-ninth and March twenty-first from four thirty to five thirty PM. You have police officers walking the track here at Town Hall in workout gear. It's a community policing program to engage the general public. Um, the police are also providing a free Blet, Blet informational workshop Wednesday, February fourteenth, five thirty PM at the Hope Mills Police Department. Um, Hope Mills Cop Police Coffee with the Cop. Um, they will meet on February thirteenth from nine AM to eleven AM. It's pretty cool to go to Starbucks and see police officers serving coffee. But for the two hours, they actually will have a table available to engage the general public. Um, in terms of projects and activities, uh, the final walkthrough for the John W. Hodges Public Safety Center will be February eighth. Um, again, our town website is currently, um, being, um, overhauled. We have an actual staff committee, um, that we formed to work through that issue with Civic Plus. Uh, the Town Hall ADA compliance, in terms of the rear doors becoming AD accessible, that construction starts tomorrow. Um, CGI digital, digital is in here in terms of the rebranding videos that we're working through. Um, we are actually working through the subdivision and zoning ordinance update in conjunction with the Hope Mills Standards and Specifications. What we're ultimately doing is cross referencing the zoning ordinance with the standards and specs and our stormwater ordinance to, uh, create a more cohesive, unified set of regulations to, uh, address development. Um, final page of the manager's report is a full update on all NCDLT roadway projects. Um, you have the construction of Agnes Project, uh, projects and upcoming let dates um, to include two ninety-five and things that nature. So I encourage the general public to view the manager's report. It'll be live on our Facebook page, uh, first thing in the morning. And that's all I have for my end.
Thank you very much. I'd like to echo that. If any citizen has any question about any of the projects that's going on in the town, by all means, please give one of us a phone call. Give Chancellor a phone call because he's got the complete updates. His manager's report is becoming more intensive as we go forward. He's putting more information into it because a lot of citizens sometimes, they don't have the opportunity to come to board meetings or view our board meetings and have questions about certain projects in the community. So that is something that we're ramping up. There's more transparency, more information that we're sharing with the public about a number of not only roadway projects, but the projects that we're doing in town as well. And so we've got a lot of moving parts and pieces that's really, really gonna enhance our community, uh, in the coming months.
Um, if I can interrupt, Mayor, Sheet's open. It's on. They're working it.
There it is. Is that ribbon cutting or is that open?
Um, I'm working with the, um, the chamber to ultimately set the ribbon cutting. It may not be before the fifteenth, but fifteenth is the date that the contractor has indicated that they will be open.
Let me know, the board know. Many of us will be there for the ribbon cutting. That's a huge addition to our community is the Sheet's complex. Uh, I think that's it. Unless we've got any more comments from the board? Sure?
Mr. Mayor, guys would like to see us concentrate on having a youth night dance. Marco, Marco. Um, I don't know how much it will cost, but these young kids right here have nothing to do except play basketball, soccer, baseball. They have nothing to socialize with their fellow students at school, or friends at church or nothing. And if we had members of our police department present and on site, I think we could knock out any problems that there might be. So if you could get back with us and let us know if that can happen. Marco, can you work with the manager on that? If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Still, it does.
That is important. Um, we've had conversations, um, even former commissioner, Ridley Richardson, the audience. We've actually had discussions about doing something with our youth, um, sometime, uh, late spring. Um, there's a lot of issues in our community with bullying and things of that nature that our youth need to be directly engaged. So as we move forward, you're gonna see a lot more community, um, involvement from the town side. But that's something that we can work approximately to do and see what we can do for you.
I appreciate it. We used to have them, but that was in the old days of Chris Kringle and myself.
The old days. Kids aren't that old. Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, we have the Committee of Committees tomorrow, correct?
Six PM, that's right.
Committee of Committees.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I usually don't speak. I'd like to say something. Um, first off, I want to congratulate our town manager. Uh, I was really looking forward to the night. Uh, I want to thank his board for coming together on that. Um, it was a, it was an easy decision. I will say that for the board. Um, to the department heads that's in here, stick with us. We made history tonight and now this board is gonna continue to make history in this town. And, um, we got a, we got a strong man leading us, uh, giving us some direction and letting us know what we need to hear, not what we wanna hear. And, uh, this board's gonna make history. We're gonna do good things, I feel. I usually don't, I usually don't speak. Everybody knows I don't really speak, but I wanted to get that on my chest. And congratulations, Chancellor, once again. And I just wanna say I'm proud to be a part of this, uh, board, part of this community. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley. Any staff comments before we wrap it up tonight? Ashley, don't have anything? All right, Dan?
I'll, I'll just say congratulations to Chancellor. I think the board has made an excellent choice and I look forward to continuing to work with it.
Appreciate you, your comments. I'll echo on that. Clarada, got anything? No? Lamargo, Drew, who else is back there? Chief, Emily? Okay. I guess we're all good tonight. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor, don't wanna oppose, we are adjourned. Six minutes, Dan.